Good morning, everyone. It's 9:00 AM. I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 3rd, 2020 work session of the Limestone County Commission. We have three people listed here on the public comment. The only one I see present is Stuart Gatlin. I don't see Judge, and Linda's not in here. I don't recognize you.
Not that I know of.
Stuart, if you don't mind, step right up here, please. You can just hand it over to me, and we can hand it down.
As long as I give it to you and you don't give it to me.
What we're looking at is a difference in our dumping. Stuart Gatlin representing CCS Garbage, the ones that don't know who I am. But what we're coming to hear today is hopefully maybe find a resolution to help with some dumping bills. Our dumping bills has went up a considerable amount since the COVID-19, I guess, from everybody staying at home. We're up about, just the last four months, we're pushing $54,000 versus last year's dumping expenses.
Okay, this is from April, May, June, July.
I guess the one on the 19 is the month, the same month last year, right?
Correct. You've got an April of 19 and 20 right beside, and the difference is to the far right of 13,880. Then, May, the May's difference from last year versus this year is 17,602. June was a little bit closer to margin with just 3,800, but then back in Ju-, this just recent month in July, we was back up nearly $18,000 more for July of 2020 than we was 2019.
What do you think? You hauling more garbage, or?
Oh, yeah. That's exactly what it is. I mean, I get everybody's-
Dumping fees that out there had-
No, they've not increased.
You just hauling more garbage.
Correct. The fee hasn't increased. It's just the amount of garbage has increased a lot. You know, I'm assuming, you know, everybody having to stay at home, or if they go out to eat, they have to get it and bring it home, and, you know, which creates more.
Of course, I know a lot of the recycling, you're getting a lot of the recycling.
Yeah, because all that's been closed.
Yeah. Because people have called me and said, "Well, it's been piling up in the garage." Well, they just, they just dump it.
You know, of course, we've got limits, but we've tried to, we've tried to, you know, be easy with those, you know, but on the same token, it's hitting us financially when you're looking anywhere from 14,000 to 18,000 more per month, just to, just to dump.
There's some talk, you know, when we renegotiated the contract last time, of us just taking the dumping fees, taking that out of the contract, and y'all just do the, y'all just do the cost of-
The service.
Yeah, the service. Pam, was there any reason why we couldn't do that, or?
I don't know that I'm aware of what you're talking about.
Well, just take, where the bill comes to us for the dumping fees, where you don't handle that cost, that you just handle the cost of service? I mean, would you be-
Well, I mean, that would be something ultimately discussed between me and Dad, but, you know, so you suggesting the county take over the cost of dumping altogether?
The tipping fees, yes. The tipping fees to the landfill. That we would take that out of the contract, and that way you wouldn't bear that risk, that fluctuation. I don't know. You'd have to-
Well, I mean, how mu-, how would y'all pay for it? But our check would remain the same, correct?
No, I mean, no, not if we redid the contract. You just, you just separate out, just separate out the tipping fees.
You know, the- I'll jump in for this conversation, I guess, wherever it may go, but just to remind everybody that the issue we run into with these solid waste contracts is under various DG regulations. They reiterate that to be able to renew them without competitive bidding, you have to stay under the same contract without any material changes. There was a change made to keep the same type of pricing structure to allow for the decreasing fees, because the contract had always contemplated that those fees would keep increasing. And like a lot of things, nobody ever saw what you might call the cost of doing business decrease. So, we kept the same pricing scheme, which, meaning it didn't create any windfall for CCS, and in our opinion, didn't create a material change. But when you're talking about changing the framework of how the contract may be entered into going forward, then you have to take another look at whether or not you're going to have to bid out this service.
Okay, yeah, I mean, yeah, I understand that would have to be rebid, but that'd be a, that'd be a decision for y'all, and whether y'all want to risk that. But, you know, that is, I would see that as an option to take that risk off of them.
Right. What about the tipping fee savings that we've got right here that the county gets every month? I don't believe it's on, that's about a $17,000 expense. They, that's-
Tipping fee savings?
That's where they redone the price for the dump.
Right. But the same thing, it takes the risk off, it would eliminate both of those, okay? I mean, it would, it would put the, if it goes up or down, we would assume either we would be getting, I mean, there's trade-offs. I mean, the risk of it going down is less than the risk of it going up, in my opinion. But, I mean, that's something that you and your dad would have to, but that's an option. You can renegotiate the contract to take off that risk. You can discuss it with your county and-
Yeah, that'd be three years out, though, because the contract was just redone.
First of March.
First of March.
Right before all this-
Yeah, I mean, that was right before all this coronavirus.
Covid really come about.
You know, I mean-
But I would assume with any, with mutual agreement between the parties, you could, if they wanted to rebid it out, or wanted to take off that risk, that that could be renegotiating. Could it not, Mark, if, if both parties were in agreement?
Well, I think, well, I think that would be a totally different new contract, and you'd have to do it. I mean, I won't think you would.
But I'm just saying that's an option.
Right. Stuart, what about January and February? And I know March is when it started. I'm just, is it strictly, you think, because of? I think, I mean, January and February was up some. I mean, not a, not a big difference, but the last four months is what we've really noticed. March through July, and who knows how long it's going to, you know, continue. You know, they, they, you know, with new cases every day.
I honestly think this is, I mean, going to be the normal for the rest of the year, probably, you know?
Right, that's possible, you know? And we're at $53,000. Almost, yeah, $53,300 just in three, four months. You know, if you times that by, by four, you're looking nearly $200,000 more in dumping for this year versus last year.
Mark, could we look at an impact fee or something like that? I mean, is that, this is affecting everybody.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's just not y'all. I mean, it's ever, I mean, it is.
But I don't, would that be feasible?
The law might consider an emergency type service.
Yeah.
Unperceived, not so much emergency, like, I think people often think of it as some kind of weather demand, something along those lines, but on the broad side, I've always felt like it's been treated as an unforeseen circumstance. I mean, that would just have to be looked at as well.
Okay.
You know, from like a county standpoint, you know, you always, you know, you prepare for a tornado or bad weather or something, but most time it's gone in a few days, and I understand where you're coming from with it.
I wonder if the dumpsters pick up, how much it has, if it's increased any. Waste Management does that? Waste does some, and then you got City of Athens, they, I spoke with a lady that's over the City of Athens dumpsters, which this was probably three months ago, as the height of this was going on. And just for effort, she, she used Cracker Barrel, for instance. She said they generally dump them six to seven times a week, and they was paid based on how many times they was dumped per week. She said they was down to one time a week, just because nobody's going, you couldn't go to-
Go in, go in.
Or any restaurant for that matter, and sat down. And they're carrying it home, and we're picking it up, you know, on the side of the road. That's where our added expense is coming in.
You know, like I said, I mean, I even noticed it myself naturally. You know, you ride down the road, you'll see people with five, six bags of garbage, you see one on the can, you know? I understand where you're coming from with it.
Yeah. We didn't, we're just wondering, you know, if the tipping fee savings, if that, you know, that's deducted from, from our total, if that was something that just couldn't be put back in the total to help compensate, because it's around a $17,000 deduction from, from our, our company check, and we're averaging a, you know, probably $15,000 per month, you know?
That'd have to involve redoing the whole contract, wouldn't it?
And what he's talking about, that's where y'all, we pay your litter crew.
Right. Well, that's, what's the dollar off the top? There's two different spots in here. There's a $23,000 expense, then a 16,000.
We have to pay the City of Athens something for picking up-
Well, and they've got their, they've got theirs too at 17,000. There's three different blanks. One for the City of Athens for 17,609.25 for collection, and then $1 per customer to county for 23,479, and then a tipping fee savings of 16,973 that is, all that's deducted from CCS Garbage Services' check. And all we would like maybe is the 16,000, the tipping fee savings back to compensate for the, the higher dumping cost.
It'd be something we'd all have to look into, you know, just figure out what you could and couldn't do. Like I said, I mean, I understand your pain. I understand where you're coming from, but I know that naturally, you know, everything has changed. This whole world's changed.
Everybody's trying to stay out of the red.
Yeah.
And that's where our Waste Management money comes from. That's where we get ours.
Yeah, that's where they get the litter patrol stuff at.
Yes.
Are you asking for what you're asking to be permanent, or just through this, the course of this?
Let me, let me back one question. Let me, let me ask a question before I answer that question. The dollar per customer to the county, the 23,479, what does that fund? The litter crews?
23. That goes to the litter crews as well.
So, both of them go to the litter crews?
Yes.
So, there's two different bills that's coming out to pay for the litter, okay?
We have four districts, and each run a litter crew.
Correct. Yeah, I just, the sixth of the tipping fee savings was a newer itemized deduction on our, our bill that hadn't been there, you know, forever. That's just in the last few years, from my understanding, has just been added. And I didn't really know what it was used for. I don't know that that was-
The tipping fee, the extra on the tipping fee?
Correct.
That was because there couldn't be a material change to your contract. Isn't that right, Mark? Yes. Without us having to rebid it the last time it was awarded, that had to be put like that, so that there wouldn't be a material change. Because an increase in price would have been, for you, would have been a material change to the contract, then we would have had to bid the services out.
But this is, from my understa-, and they decreased the price of per ton at the dump, and we're still paying the high rate, and this is, am I wrong?
No, you're not paying the high rate.
Okay.
It dropped down to 39, or whatever, whatever it dropped down to.
Yes.
From my understanding, the attempt in the last contract, or the material change, or non-material change, whatever it was, was just to take out the reduction of what the tipping fee, what, it went from 52 something to 39, or something like that. I can't remember the number. But that was only, and a little bit less than that was taken out. So, you, I think you actually gained a little bit more, and you netted. The intent of all that was, was to make sure you didn't suffer loss, okay? The, the cost that we, that we pay at the tipping, at the landfill, went down substantially, okay? But the amount taken out was less than what the tipping fee went down. If that, does that make sense?
Some.
That is, that is correct, yes. Okay. So, you didn't suffer loss on that. That was the intent of that, to keep from having to rebid, but, but yet to make sure that you didn't suffer from that.
Yeah.
The county could get a cheaper dumping fee in CCS.
Right.
Well, one of the things, and we're going to be going our way around with this. First of all, we'd have to see by legal law what we could and couldn't do. And I mean, every, one thing I think from all of us, from a standpoint, I would like to see, and this is just if you can get this affirmation to us, would you get back plum to the first of the year, you know, that information, just to kind of say, hey, you know, that way when we can kind of look and say, hey, this is when it hit, and then we can kind of make a better analogy to what we feel would be. And I mean, if that's fine with you, that's what we, and that, you know, because like I said, it would give us time to mull over and think about what all has transpired here. Because I understand that people are, I mean, we're doing it, we're eating at home more. I understand you're putting more on the side of the road, but I'd like to know a good number to saying, hey, it was in January, it was this number, because, you know, you go back to about February, you know, in March, when it really started hitting, you know, and that would kind of go from there, you know?
Like I said, yeah, January, January is always going to be a heavier month, just because you're right after Christmas. And Christmas, the last couple, three weeks after Christmas, because you got all the kids out of school, just like they are now, or have been since March, you know, for two or three weeks. But that shouldn't be an issue. We can probably get that too.
And even though that, we know, I mean, we could, you know, even go back to last year, you know, if we could get it, if we could get last year's run and this year's run, you know, side by side, it would kind of be a 12-month. I think that'd be fair to everybody here to be able to see those numbers and-
We can do that.
And, Stuart, while you're here, and this is a separate issue, but, you know, the situation that we have down there in Monarch Way and Sugar Way and all those, would, I would like to try a trial of a dumpster down there. I know y'all don't have that capability right now, but Waste Management could put one down there for $200 a month, $200 a month for, for, for a weekly pickup. And if, if, I'd like to try a trial. It wouldn't impact your, what you get now.
Correct.
But if that is successful, would y'all consider maybe one truck that could, could handle a dump, you know, two dumpsters, or something like that?
We would have to buy a completely new truck. We don't, we don't even have a truck that can, that can dump a dumpster. And I think probably with putting a dumpster down there, they're going to pile stuff up beside it, around it, in it, on it, under it.
Well, that would be up for us to police it.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, that's a-
Something I'd like to try, you know?
I mean, I agree, it's a mess, but I think until those folks go to taking a little responsibility of their own, it's going to be, I may ask.
Well, you have the issues of the animals and scattering, and, you know, I'm fixing to buy two cameras for surveillance, just to see exactly what's going on there. But I would like, it's something I'd like to try. Just let you, let you know.
Or when they post the dumpster.
It would, it would be right there where the, those garbage cans are, and we would, I've already talked with Waste Management, we would have to level off a pad, and we'll have to get, there's a lot of things that would have to happen. We'd have to have the owner's permission to put it there. And, but that's where they, that's where they would put it, where they, those existing trashcans are now.
Well, it's out of time. I mean, I don't mean to cut y'all short.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's-
We've got to get, you know, through all this. And like I said, if you'll give us that information, Stuart, I think that'd be gratefully needed to everybody.
Hopefully by tomorrow.
And like I said, just no hurry, just next day or two, because like I said, we'll, we appreciate you coming in and bringing this to our attention, and thank you. You got anything else to say?
No. Thank y'all for your time.
Um, I know Judge just come in. I think you have got something to say, Judge?
I apologize. I was actually on the phone with Ardmore Mayor Billy Shannon. I think it's on the agenda for, to bring before the commission to relocate polling locations in both Elkmont and Ardmore. The Ardmore is a little ahead of where it needs to be, so we don't need any action on that. The ma-, the town of Elkmont is voting tonight, and Mayor Compton, as of Friday, said he felt certain it would be a rubber stamp tonight. But what the, what we would bring would be to relocate the polling location from the Elkmont Town Hall downtown Elkmont to the Elkmont Volunteer Fire Department, which is 19667 Sandlin Road, on the approval of the Elkmont Mayor and Town Council, primarily due to their growth, the concern of being able to process all the voters that are anticipated for October, for November 3rd general election, which will probably be about twice as many as voted in March, and three times as many as voted in July, because that, the space down there is just so limited, they are busting at the seams.
The parking and getting in and out.
Parking is bad, getting in and out is bad. When they build the volunteer fire department, Mayor Compton relayed to me, he thought it was going to happen then, but the board at the Elkmont Volunteer Fire Department at that point, which I think was a couple of years ago, was not interested in being a polling location, but they have now approved it and are go, and are go with it. So, again, it would be, this, this body sets the polling locations, but routinely, if it's within a municipality, this body has only acted based on that municipality, whether it's Athens, Madison, whomever, Elkmont, Ardmore, whatever, Lester, all those places. And they, it's on their agenda for tonight at 6:30, so contingent upon their approval tonight, would relocate that polling location. We will probably be back to address the situation at Ardmore. They're looking at another location, because the municipal annex downtown, Ardmore has more voters than Elkmont does, and the space is actually smaller. And then possibly for Westside Community Center, we're having discussions with the owner of that property, as well as looking at some options there with the school board.
Scratch the Ardmore.
No, Ardmore, we're not asking for any action on Ardmore at all, just Elkmont. And we would come back at a later meeting for, for Ardmore, Westside, and if there are any others. And now, as y'all all know, one of the biggest issues is going to be what distance restriction we're under in November. We just, but this will be a permanent move. This isn't just for November in Elkmont. It would be that there until it moves, you know, for '22 and the subsequent elections.
And you're still in contact with the City of Madison about Lutheran Lambogon?
We are still in contact with the City of Madison. They want to administer their municipal election in August at that location. We have strongly suggested they look at splitting that for the two Madison City School, or Madison City Council districts that are within Limestone County. The concern is the finding a location that could handle. They're, they're probably by November going to have 7,000 voters at that location. They're over 6,500 now, I think.
I guess I'm a little biased to the Elkmont situation.
I understand.
I'm glad they're moving it, because, you know, everybody parks at Church of Christ or walks across the road.
It is. It is. Well, and, and for history, where they vote used to be the fire department. I mean, the bays for the fire trucks are behind it, but then when they moved, everybody thought the voting location would go with the fire department, and the governing body of the volunteer fire department said, "Nope, we don't want to be a polling location," when that happened a couple of years ago. But now it's happening, and everybody's excited about it.
Well, I'm excited they're moving it from safety standpoint of it is.
Thank y'all.
Especially with older generations.
Exactly. The parking's good, the access is good. It's, it's a much better, big, much bigger room. It'll, it'll work well.
Anything else, Judge?
That's all I got.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank y'all.
And I reckon Linda never came in, did she? Do we have any more public comments signed up?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on, resolutions and orders. First on here will be a resolution to change the Ardmore and Elkmont polling place, which Judge just explained, so.
We'll scratch Ardmore.
We're scratching Ardmore, yeah. Got ahead of myself there. We're just going to change the elkmont, so that'll be on there. Any discussion with that? I guess we have no discussion then, right? All right, then, we'll, and on second on here, we'll be adding a resolution with Terry Acuff to approve resolution regarding the 2020 CBDC, DBG grant funding, which we all have a copy of it here. Do y'all have any discussion with that?
No, that's a good, that's a good project, and we hope we get it.
I hope we do, too, so. Yeah, so, no discussion with that. We'll move on to, the third, next one here will be on the contracts, agreements, and grants. First will be to approve a grant with the Tarr Cog Area on Aging Cares Act for the bag meal program of $62,460, which will be July the 1st through 2020 until September the 30th of 2021. Any discussion with that? All right. No discussion with that. We'll move on to the second one will be approved court referral officer contract between Administrative Director of Courts and the Limestone County Community Corrections, which will be October the 1st of 2020 till September the 30th of 2021 for the amount of $33,612. Any discussion with that? All right. No discussion with that. We have no budget revisions, no emergency purchases, no board appointments. Under award of beds, we have one bed with printers and stationery for $329 with a license commissioner. Any discussion with that? All right. No discussion with that. We'll be on the personnel action. We'll promote James Tolan to a deputy. Any discussion with him? All right, we have no merit increases. Engineer's report, Mr. Massey?
I have nothing for you to act on today, but I guess just to kind of give you an update. We are, we are in District 3, working on Snake Road to finish it up, which is rebuild Alabama project, Warren Drive, finish it up. And then we'll be back to our district list when we finish those two projects. And so, we'll, like I said, we'll pick back up at our district list and continue working down, down the line. So, we're looking at, I think right now, we're looking at probably being in District 2 next week, and District 1 the week after. It's kind of the way it, it's laying out right now, weather permitting, and all of those kinds of things, so.
Y'all coming to great.
Yeah, we got to finish that. That's the next, that's the next one on the list where we left off, so we got to finish it, but it's half a day. So, we'll get, we'll get that done, and then we'll be moving equipment to District 2 by the end of the week.
How far, you know, due to all the rain, inclement rain and weather and everything that we, how far are we behind?
Two months.
Well, we're, we're two months behind based on when we got started on the list, but we've also had several, we've also done all of our rebuild Alabama projects in the midst of it, which is what, what the agreement was. We would get the rebuild Alabama, and whenever the contract could move in. So, so, yes, there is, there is some of that. So, there is some rain delay, but, but there, so I don't know exactly-
Right.
-how that is, because we, we fit the rebuild Alabama in the mix. So, but we are finishing that up. The last thing we have for rebuild Alabama is a chip seal on Shaw Road, but we're not doing that until right before the contractor can, can come in and do that work. So, as far as anything, we have control over rebuild Alabama will be done in the next couple of days. And then, like I said, all we'll have is, is, is district projects.
All right. Anybody got anything else from Art? Thank you, Mark. Under other business, first on here will be to approve, to move the following inventory, which was District 3, which will be an air compressor, and then license commissioner will be a copier. And I think that we have some items to add.
I need to add a truck to that. It's a 2007 Ford F-350. It's got engine problems that are going to be more costly than the vehicle's worth to replace. So, I had a guy give me an estimate. He said it had to have a new engine, be about 16,000. Well, I found a truck in Montgomery for 12, a whole different truck, so it just made sense to get the new truck and let somebody else worry about the engine in this one.
All right, we're going to put that on Gov. Deals?
That's what the plan is.
Okay, Gov. Deals, okay. All right, anything else?
Jessica's got her some stuff now.
You don't wait till you comment?
No, because I left it in the truck, so I was going, I was going to do it during my comments at the end.
You don't just wait till you comment, Sam?
Well, she's got me a copy right here.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. So, I got a utility bed that I'm going to put on Gov. Deals, where we bought a truck. We made a flat bed out of it, so we could pull the excavator. It had a, it was a military truck that had a big bed on the back of it. I've got a 1976 Caterpillar Bulldozer, a D8K, that we're going to, they're going to be selling on Gov. Deals. I've also got some equipment to go with the Caterpillar excavators. I got a bucket that I'm going to be selling. Got a better built trailer that's got a panel hitch, it's a 22 and a half ton trailer, 44 long. I've got a freight liner, Unimog, it's got a backhoe and a front end loader on the front of it. It's a military piece of equipment. It's got a Mercedes motor in it. We're going to be selling it. And then I've got a, a rollback truck that we got from Forestry Commission years ago. We bought it, it was a deal where you had a bulldozer that came along with it. We've since sold that bulldozer, and we've got the truck sitting there. We thought we would save it and use it for other things, and we haven't used it in about two years, so we're going to be selling this F-800 rollback. So, that's it.
All right. Anybody else have anything to add to Gov. Deals?
I haven't found anything else. We can get some money out of it. We're going to sell it, too.
All right. All right, so, no more discussion with all that. We'll be moving on. We have no schedule of public hearings. Report officers, Commissioner Sammet?
I don't have anything this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Sammet. Commissioner Turner?
I'll wait till the regular meeting.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Turner. Commissioner Black?
Same thing. I'll wait till the regular meeting.
All right, thank you. Mr. Harris?
Well, I want to bring up something that is probably better in a work session than a regular meeting. You know, as we mentioned- Well, I want to bring up something that is probably better in a work session than a regular meeting. Um, you know, as we, we mentioned and pointed out, we're, on our district projects, we're behind, you know, due to weather and getting all the Rebuild Alabama Act, uh, projects done, so, and that's good. I mean, we're not losing that. But one thing that would help us is that, uh, if, when we have a project, and this is something that we kind of had a gentleman agreement with back when we, when we bought the Mack trucks, that when we have a paving project, a huge paving project like I had on Easter ferry, uh, during the week of July the twentieth, it was kind of agreed to that we send all our Mack trucks, because here's what happens. Uh, you can put out a Mack truck full of, uh, full of asphalt in about seven minutes. The return, the trip to the, uh, asphalt plant, it takes about an hour and a half. We have a total of eleven trucks in the county, Mack trucks, uh, that we could, uh, you know, put to these projects, and that would be seventy-seven, eleven times seven minutes is seventy-seven minutes. Well, the, the trip is about a, an hour and a half or ninety minutes, so you can almost keep a paving machine going constantly instead of having to wait to get trucks back from the, from the, uh, plant. So when Terry Bob, uh, asked for trucks, you know, initially, he was gonna have nine trucks, and that's, that was good, but then only, you know, it's only my three trucks, uh, the paving, the engineering trucks have two, and then Darryl sent one truck. We didn't get any trucks from District Two and District Three. And, and it to, to get us productive, and that, when we talked about getting the milling machine, which increased the capacity for our ability to do projects, big projects like this and save a ton of money, we can do the hauling ourselves, and we can keep that, um, keep that machine going. The Easter ferry project should have been a three-day project. It turned into a five-day project. Okay? The, the engineering crews', uh, cost is somewhere around six thousand a day. My crew is about fifteen hundred a day. So you're talking about seventy-five hundred day, dollars a day, uh, just in, just in, uh, salaries, and, and, and that increases our costs. That's, that's another fifteen thousand we could have saved. What it does, it not only hurts District Four, okay, when, when, when the, all the trucks are not sent, it hurts you too, because we're not unable to get to your projects. We, we could have gone to District Three two days earlier. Okay? So it helps all of us, is, and, and like we kind of had a gentleman agreement, and I thought about doing a resolution to present this morning, but I heard that was a non-starter. But when we, when we have projects like this in any district, and I sent, I sent trucks to District Three just last week. I've, I, anytime that I've been asked for trucks, they have gone to every one of y'all's districts. In addition, every time they do a project in your district, one of my trucks goes every time, four or five, I've actually lent to the paving crew to, to have, make them more productive. So we've got to look at ways of being, lowering our cost and being more productive. And if we all work together on these large paving projects, we can achieve that, and we can get your projects done in addition to my project. So I would, I would strongly requ-, encourage you that when Terry Bob or the county engineer asks for trucks for a big project, that you send them.
Well, my two trucks has been in District Three for a month, until one of them broke down, and it's been in the shop now for nine days.
And we haul for a solid month for the Build Alabama project, Rebuild Alabama project for mine. We haven't had them sitting still. We've been non-stop hauling slag from Decatur, so if, we were, we were working on a project that I'd asked him to borrow his trucks way before anybody even mentioned the Easter ferry project.
Well, Terry.
Before anybody ever asked for the, for the use of those trucks, we were using my two, again, until one of mine broke down with a hydraulic issue. He had one break down because of the bed, so we only had two trucks hauling at that time too. And so now, since we're, we did the chip seal last week on Snake Road, we're doing the rest of it this week. Had we not hauled during that month, we would not be ready for them to have done what they did last week and what they're doing this week, because we wouldn't have had any material. So that, that's where we came into it.
So when Terry Bob asked for the trucks, initially his foreman said, yes, and then you did not request trucks to, from District Two?
Oh, yeah. Big Tom's been calling me every day for the last month.
But not, not during that week, because you knew that there was a project?
Yeah, we did too. That week, because we talked about it on a Sunday.
Okay.
He called me and said, on Sunday that he did not need the trucks, and then Monday morning, he said, yep, I do need them, so.
And I understand the gentleman's agreement, but that always go, that, that goes both ways. Like if, if we need something or, like, we need something to work on, you know, like up on the rails, the trails and stuff like that, we, we need you to also assist us in those things, when, when the three of us are working.
Well, I volunteer, I mean, I volunteered to all that. Uh, there's never been a time when I've been requested for trucks that I've not sent them. Darryl said he could handle the, the rail. I was, I, my foreman went up there, and we were gonna help with relaying the pipe and everything. We were gonna lay, you know, uh, everything but the bush cutter, okay, everything, because I had one in the shop at, uh, uh, Try Green, and then we were cutting on cotton belt. But, uh, everything, but he said, uh, he didn't need me. Okay?
Well, we've got a delivered bid price on asphalt and rock and everything else.
That's correct.
I mean, it is a little more, but if it's, you know, if it's, if you're gonna make it out to be an issue of time, you know, I'm sure Reed or Rogers Group or anybody that we buy material from is, you know, they're gonna be buying a truck to get to us if we call an order.
And if, and if you look at the, it's almost a wash, if you look, if you're figuring, if you're figuring in your employees' cost, and you're figuring in your trucks' cost, and you're figuring in your fuel cost, that delivered amount is really about the same as, as if.
No, no, it's not. No, it's not. But anyway, we got, I don't, you got people sitting there waiting on trucks in a project that are waiting on trucks. And sure, we could have done it, but it's at a higher price. We've had, the Rebuild Alabama is what, down three hundred thousand? The revenue for Rebuild Alabama, the gas tax?
I don't, I don't know the exact number, but yeah, we know it's down.
It's down. Our, our, uh, revenue on our local, uh, three cent tax is down thirty, was down thirty percent, and then twenty-five percent in, in, uh, in June, so, uh, and all the, the seven, five, and four cent tax that we get from the state of Alabama is down. So we're limited, we're, we're hurting for funds, and just like, you know, CCS garbage. I mean, this has impacted us, and so we need to find every way in which we can be more efficient. Okay? So that's, I mean, I, it's hurting y'all too. Okay? So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Harrison. I want to thank everybody for coming. Thank Stuart for coming, presenting to us. Um, thank Judge, he's already left. I mean, that polling place, Elkmont, will be vital to this community's safety-wise, especially for the older generation, you know, crossing the road there and all that. Glad that we are, they're taking that on. So, um, with all that, we will recess until ten AM. Thank y'all.